...through the perilous fight, or the red hearts we watched were so gallantly streaming. And the rockets ran clear of us, we missed it. It grew through the night that our flag was still there. Oh Satan's that star-spangled banner yet gray. For the land of the free and the home of the brave.
Please be seated. Okay, roll call. We'll start down there.
Sheriff Bessero.
Colin Conklin present.
Sally Hunt.
Krista.
Will Furry present.
And Dave Freeman sitting in for Superintendent Moore.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Freeman. Okay, so we're going to move on to the agenda here. We have special announcements, we're going to move past those. Spotlights and approval of minutes. We're going to go to number five, adoption of agenda. Are there any additions or changes?
No, no additions or changes.
Okay, very good. At this time, I'd just like to also just remind the board, if you noticed that I made certain that you all have a pad of paper there. This is just a utility for you, feel free to use whatever material you want to take down notes. When we have presenters today, I'm just going to ask that we please all allow them to complete all the way to the end, and then we'll all have individual discussion or questions at the end of the presentations. So with that said, we are going to move on to public comment. Has anybody signed up for public comment today?
At this time, there has been no one signing in for public comment. Mr. Coach Jones, you have something?
I thought I did, maybe I didn't hit the go button. I thought I did, maybe I haven't hit the go button.
You might not have hit the go button, but I'll add you in, so if you want to step forward.
Yes, please come forward.
Good afternoon, it's good to be back. Took a couple weeks off. What I wanted to talk about today is priorities, priorities. Now, I've been coming to these meetings a long time, but for the past year, with coincides, probably not making that much difference, with three new members of the board, what I don't seem to see or understand or perceive is that the board has spent any time in the last year thinking about kids. You've thought about, Flagger, you've thought of Astrah, and you fired the, caused the resignation of the Flagger Youth Orchestra Director, 18 years and at the top of her game. You have spent time firing the superintendent of schools. You are spending time firing or trying to cause the resignation of the school attorney who is both knowledgeable and trustworthy. But on top of that, you have, let's see, in the time that I've did the past year, you certainly going after books and your perception of pornography. You've gone after safe places in the schools, you have. You go after anything with a rainbow on it for your own personal convictions. It seems to me that you're spending more time, more time and more taxpayer money attacking cultural issues, and not once that I hear, especially the new members, say, "Let's do something for the kids finally." Let's think about them, and I'll tell you why I'm saying that. These kids now in Florida, they're learning now what it's like to grow up in a uber-conservative bubble, similar to Arkansas, Oklahoma, Tennessee, Alabama, where they grow up in their own bubble, and they learn only what their conservative teachers, conservative parents, and conservative church leaders tell them what to believe. And they're going to go out in the world, just like in the future, Florida students are going to go out in the world, and they're not going to compete against Asian kids, they're not going to compete against Indians, they're not going to compete against students coming out of top schools in the Northeast or the far Northwest. They're not. They're only going to know what they learned from within this conservative bubble, and they're not going to compete. Now, the world does need tire changers, really does. It needs people that can pump gas, sure. But don't you think we want our kids coming out of here, Flagger County, to get top jobs and to compete ably against everybody who is also going for those top jobs, or they're not going to? Education in Florida now has been on the decline, it's going to go on, it's going to continue to decline far faster, and I hope you'll use your time this year to make it better for the kids and for education, not for culture wars. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Chanel Channing, ma'am, are you wanting to speak now?
Yeah.
Go ahead, go ahead, it's all good, I'll mark the end. No worries.
You know, those doors being closed.
No worries.
You know, the ones I'm there at, it's a little like nothing's, they're closed. I thought last week, I thought it was like closed, closed, it's so dark. All right. I came bearing gifts. No super, huh?
Daughter had a baby.
Hmm?
Daughter had a baby.
Oh. All right, well, here, here, here. But these are, are personal alarms. This is, the topic has to do with safety for teachers. And personal safety alarms is what those are. So it's safety for teachers in the schools, as you know, a lot of times I'm trying to have it put on the agenda for violence in the schools, and so that's what I'm asking for, but the focus is teachers at this point. And gone through a couple chairs asking for violence to be put on the agenda, a couple superintendents as well, so I'm asking you to put violence on the agenda so that, that parents and teachers and the community feel welcome to talk about the violence that's going on within the schools so that we can get it down. I can tell you from my experience in the military, you can have people, of all sorts, as well as gangs and whatnot, they come in, I want to tell you, as soon as they hit that basic training, all that behavior stops. And forensic mental hospitals too, and I can tell you, you can get it under control. And our teachers, you know, no matter how much you pay them, they're not going to want to have to be facing post-traumatic stress for the rest of their lives if they're working in an environment where they're seeing violence all the time. And our kids, they get post-traumatic stress, childhood onset if they're around that kind of violence for their whole lives. So these are alarms for the teachers, they could, this is something, you know, they're not really allowed to leave the classrooms when there's violence going on in the classroom, so this is something that can draw their, the attention if there's a fight going on in the classroom, or if they're getting beaten up themselves. So that's one, one suggestion here, to help them protect themselves. And so, once again, asking that it get put on the agenda so that, that, like I say, the parents and, and the community, and even the kids themselves feel like that they're welcome to come, they'll know it's happening, they'll feel emboldened to come at the same time and speak up. And as you can see from what, the form I sent around, that this has many uses, including bullying, to protect themselves, not just for teachers, obviously. Kids too, I recommend, anyone watching, get one of those for your kids. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd just like to say, though, that in, in response to these alarms, we have just recently implemented clickers for our administration staff and teachers that will notify the sheriff and our local, and our, our SRDs on campus in the case of, of different types of threats on campus. So something like this has been implemented.
Oh, good, well, good then. Then parents, get one of those for your kids.
Dave, can you just share, since Will brought it up, because this is like the top of the line?
Right, it is, it's a Syntejix badge, it's this badge right here, it's used at all our campuses, that it can be used for when you just have an incident at the school, or if there's a more serious incident where you need the police to respond. But it's already been implemented, Tommy is, Mr. Wilhelm's already done the training, and we've already passed out the badges, so we're fully implementing.
Greatness.
And just to reiterate, this is not something that you tinkered with in your garage, this is like a, this is used across many districts, it's a well-respected, fairly costly.
Right, across the nation and in, and many school districts in the state of Florida. I don't have that number, but, but across the nation it is.
Great, thank you for sharing, ma'am. Okay, so, do we have another comment?
You do.
Yes, okay.
Dr. Yvette Edchell Spano on student safety.
Good afternoon, boards, members. I'm Yvette Edchell Spano, and I am the NAACP Education Chair for Flagger County. And I wanted to, I wasn't going to speak, but then I said, yes, I will, about student safety. And I know that this board is really concerned about, number one, education, and number two, the safety of the, the students, the teachers, and staff members that are within that community, which is the school building, as well as outside of the school building. So, like, some of you may receive calls from parents, I also receive calls from parents. And there are signs in the schools that say, "See something, say something." There's also signs that say, "Fill out a statement," or "Make out a statement." And one of the current concerning things are that students have been making statements, they've been following the practice of contacting an adult in the school system that they feel comfortable with saying that there is a concern. And what happens when they fill out the statement, it doesn't necessarily bring about an action. And then an action happens after there is an incident in the school. So I would like to know, is there a policy for the follow-up for the statements that are provided to whoever the individual receiving those, those statements? And what is the follow-up for that? What actions are taken to, to either circumvent an incident that's going to be happening in the school? Or if someone's complaining about bullying, what is being done for that? And so, I'm asking for a response from the board to be able to work with you and with parents, as well as students, to be able to, to figure out what's going to work best within that school building. Thank you.
Thanks, Greg. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sheriff Furry, that concludes public comment.
Okay, thank you all to those who commented today, we appreciate your participation. And we're going to move on with the agenda here, and we're going to go to seven point oh one, and that is request board approval of Imagine Charter School Financials. We have this warm mic.
Good afternoon. Chairman, board members, and Mr. Freeman, Ms. Whitmore and I are here to answer any questions you have on resources and support consent, starting with, as Mr. Furry said, seven point zero one, Charter School Financials.
Do we have any questions? Okay, so no questions, we will move on to seven point oh two, which is board approval of purchase orders over $10,000. Any questions?
I have a question.
Yes.
On page one there, Patty, it says we paid the FSA $12,728.23, that was for the superintendent's search?
Correct.
Yeah, is that it, are we paid off now?
That is the, the one in final invoice.
Okay, what was the total, the total expenditure?
That was the total. That's the, that's the total, I think the $12,000 was for the partial charge of, and then the $700 was travel.
And I was curious where we, we ended with that.
That's the total cost.
Perfect, that's what I wanted to find out on that.
All right, any other questions regarding this agenda?
Yeah, on page three, we bought a lot of playground equipment for an elementary school, over close to $100,000 worth. What did we get?
It's not a, it's not equipment, it's an actual new playground.
So what did they get?
For their, I think it's their middle, their third, fourth, and fifth grades, it's a, if you've ever driven by Old Kings and seen theirs, it's very similar to that, it's a huge playground with shade.
Right.
Covering on it, and it's for their, I think, third, fourth, and fifth, it's for their older kids.
That's good, all right.
And the cost of that is very consistent with the cost of other playgrounds that we've seen, we wanted to lock in while we could for that price.
All right, good.
Everything tends to go up in January.
Yeah, that's true. Okay, that's all I had, I think.
Okay, so any other questions, seven point oh two? No, so we'll move on to seven point oh three, request board approval of vendor payments. Any questions on these here?
Back to my own self again, finally. All right, on the, I noticed two payments, exact payments to the Flagger County Sheriff's Office for $19,000, what, $19,165, and point one says, assume it's for SROs, they're two exact, it's on page seven.
The, those payments that you see there in that whole group, that is all one invoice for them, and what you're seeing for the $19,000 is one for, is one for each high school.
Oh, so that, that is.
Yeah, so that whole group there is split, for that PO, there's a line code for every single school, correct.
That's why it's identical.
And if you look at the other ones, the $8,677, those are for all the elementary and secondary that only have one SRO versus two.
Okay, page 29. CDW Government, $92,000 plus.
Is that PO up on this one? 031.
Page 29, that's, what was it? It's a lot of money.
Is it 30? 10? No, sorry, 179, that's PO group.
And it's, just, if you could just give us one second.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine, that's why I gave you the page number.
031.
We're going to have Mr. Destein come up and discuss this one, this is a technology item.
That's a big-ticket item, so I'm just trying to pinpoint what is.
This is, this is the payment for server storage and switchgear in our data center. So this is essentially the core server services that are in our, our data center, so this is a hyper-converged solution. So essentially, this is replacing equipment that is right at five years old. It was a project that was planned and budgeted for.
So it's budgeted for, okay, and it's actually replacing equipment, so it's not service, it's, you're replacing.
Correct, yeah.
Okay, okay, that's what I was trying to figure out.
Yeah, it's, it's equipment, yeah, it's, it's multiple servers, but essentially, it, it's what is considered a hyper-converged solution, so it includes, it's compute, storage.
And it doesn't qualify for half penny?
It is, it should be.
That is half penny.
Does it come on half penny?
Yeah, that is half penny.
And then this is under the category of infrastructure on the half set sales tax.
One more, page 35, thank you. Page 35, Power School, $84,835. I'm assuming that is the, I'm not sure if it's HR program, the new.
If you can look that PO up, but I believe that one.
So I'm getting a yes?
That is our Schoology, our learning management platform.
It's Schoology.
Can you pull that PO real quick?
All right, Power School.
Power School's taken over several, several different companies.
Yeah, this, this would be $84,835.
Yes, that's our LMS, our district wide licensing and support for our LMS.
That adable?
Yes.
Okay, so, thank you very much, that's it.
All right, any others? All right, I do have one question, and it's on 20, page 28, Ben E. Keith Company, there's several POs there with varying dollar amounts, what is that for?
I can.
That's food services.
Yeah, food service, that's our new vendor for food service, that we initiated this this last year.
So is that for food purchases, is that what these are?
Yes, that's what it should be.
And supplies.
And, okay, just general supplies, like.
General supplies that would go with the food, I would assume.
Okay.
I'm just looking at the coding to tell you that.
Gotcha, okay. All right, so if there's no other questions on seven point oh three, we'll move on to seven point oh four, request board approval of the deletion of inventory. Any questions about these items here?
No, but a statement on the way, see, we're getting rid of a couple buses at auction. That's important, we continue to do that, helps other areas too, because they usually get picked up locally.
Have you had good success with that auctioning of buses in the past?
We have, we use Gideon Auction Services, I think they're out of Lake County, and they're pretty good about making sure the title is squared away and removed and getting a fair price for them.
Dave, did we ever follow up on the donation of the bus to the construction program over at FPC?
We were waiting on a short bus to be, and right now, we're still, still in that holding pattern right now.
Okay, if there are any other questions, we'll move on to seven point oh five, request board approval for finance, budget, and amendments. Any questions or comments?
Hold on, I'm not sure if this is, yes, I think this is. On page two, it says move money due to change in salary coding, $72,000 for adults with disabilities, what is that for? I mean, obviously, it says salary coding, but is that money that's moved in or moved out?
It's budget transfers, right.
Yeah.
Did you say page two?
Yeah, there it is, up at the top.
That is money that was moved from one object to another, I believe, with adults with disabilities. We had changed the coding from one of their staff from an 0120, which is instructional, to other certified, which is 0130, so the budget was already there, it just got moved to the correct code strip.
Okay, so it was, was it moved in their budget, or was it moved out of their budget?
It was moved within their budget.
Gotcha, gotcha, gotcha. Thank you. That was, that's all I had.
Okay. So any other questions, we'll move on, seven point oh six, request board approval of professional development travel.
I just want to make sure that all these have been budgeted for. Not very expensive, but they should be in their budgets, so it's enough.
Yes, that is correct.
That's fine.
And if you, if I may just point out, the very last column, you can see those that come out of general fund, those that come out of federal, the second half is all grant-related.
Since we're on that, just to circle back, I think it was Adam who was here a couple of months ago, who took kind of hours off the job to come here per policy, to ask to attend a conference that was being paid for by a grant anyway, do I have that correct? And something that, I don't know, if I brought up or someone else brought up, is, is that we, a lot of times we talk about reviewing policies, you know, during these workshops, and I don't know that we ever get that on the agenda. But since, in bringing this up, I would like to bring that out again, like, there are several policies I would love for this board to review, and that is one of them. Can we have a policy where, or can the policy be that Superintendent Moore, at up to a certain dollar amount, can approve professional development conferences without employees, without staff having to come before the board?
That particular one was because it was out of state.
So that is like, that is statute?
I don't know if it's statute, but I know that any travel that comes before you, even if it's paid, I know our purchasing coordinator has one too, that her purchasing chapter pays for, but since it's out of state, it comes to the board. So, Mr. Freeman, if you want to jot that down, we can talk about that in senior.
And Patty, I believe, I was always told, because I asked that question years ago, and it was also for insurance purposes. If they were traveling and somebody got hurt or whatnot, it was approved by the board and it was acknowledged, yeah. So it wasn't just the financial amount, it was for insurance purposes.
Because the board kind of said, like, we're this, we are responsible for that insurance, and so we are the, okay, got you.
It's the board approving the temporary.
Work area of the person.
Work area out of state, where in-state, it's easier to say there's going to be that coverage, but coverage out of state, if they were to be injured, or if they're running a car, it's covering that whole.
Can I just ask, like, maybe a hybrid here? Did Adam have to be the one to take three hours off to sit here? Like, is there a way that we can follow the rules but not have our.
Adam chose to do that because he wanted to be here.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, typically, the person who goes out, like, for example, Chris Colora, when she does it, it's, they're the best person to explain the purpose of the conference and to answer any questions. I wouldn't be able to sit here and regurgitate why Adam is taking that conference. And I think it's more just like Dr. Conklin said, just to, you know, get out in the public and just, you know, this is what I'm doing, this is the cause of it.
Love it, it's, it's, it's more than just asking.
Exposure.
It feels a little bit of a, of a rubber stamping process, I have yet to hear.
There's a gazillion things we've rubber stamped, but we're required to.
And that's fine, it's just if it's going to be a rubber stamping, but that's fine, that's the reason, like, it's good for Adam to be here, to participate, to explain things so that we're aware of some of the things that are going on. Awesome.
Absolutely.
So, good conversation, thank you.
And Sally, if there's specific, I would recommend when we get to new business, just throw out what policy number you want reviewed. That's the best way to do it. Just say, "I would like to put on a future agenda the review of policy, blah, blah, blah." Because asking, there's a gazillion policies, but if you narrow it down to the policies you want to look at, then we just put it on the agenda.
I'd like to also just take this moment to, to go back to the pad of paper and the notes that we're taking, because you brought up a lot of great things, but we want to get through these agenda items and speak only to the agenda item itself. So as, you know, Dr. Conklin mentioned, that would be a great thing to write down and bring up during new and old business, right, so that we can, we want to get past these things.
Yes, Chairman Furry. On it. Thank you, sir.
So, well, so on this travel, is there anything else that you need there? Okay, so, moving on to seven point oh five, request board approval of district financial statement.
The only thing I have is Medicare. Do they ever catch up?
They do, it's, we recently, what, just a couple weeks ago, we received the data we need for the first quarter, that Carrie is working on with staff, we have not received the second and third quarter yet, that always. We have not received the second and third quarter yet, that always comes in the second half of the year, but we always do receive it in full.
It's finally, it does catch up.
Oh, absolutely, yeah, I think the last two quarters, last year, we received probably in July or August, but, um, and that gets booked back into that fiscal year, but it it just, it's late, it rears.
And Patty, the only question I had, with some of the audit exceptions, what are we doing to address that?
The next, that's the next one?
That's the next one.
No, I thought we were on this already, sorry, I'll wait.
Next one.
That's my question, for the next one.
Okay, so if we're done here with the district financial statements, no further questions, we'll move on to seven point oh eight. Request board approval of the audited financial statement for the district school, internal activities fund for fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
I will say, um, to answer your question, Dr. Conklin, let me just first state that, um, we had more schools or departments than ever before that had a clean audit this year. Um, it's really turned around from last year, especially considering last year, we had, I think, ninety percent turnover in the internal bookkeepers, or the bookkeeper at the school. This report just recently was finalized, um, we have a person in our department, a new, um, a new person that's taken over, not new, but a former bookkeeper who is very intimately involved with internal, and she is directly overseeing this, she is working with all the bookkeepers, she's responsible for training all the bookkeepers as well. We did just have a recent bookkeeper meeting with all the bookkeepers, where these items were, um, gone over and, um, discussed with them. And then the next steps is for us to go out to the schools and meet individually with the principals to, especially for the repeat findings. There's a handful that are repeat findings at some of the schools, um, and just try to see how that's addressed, some of those conversations have already started informally.
Excellent, thank you.
Yeah, and I I just want to do a shout-out, staying on that same line, administrative offices, Belter Elementary, these are the bookkeepers. Indian Trails Middle School, Old Kings, Student Services, Wadsworth Elementary School, they all had clean audits.
And Carrie.
Childhood.
It's really important that they know they're doing a great job, and hopefully the others, if you're dealing with cash, you're going to have receipts, it's going to be issues all the time.
And Carrie spearheaded that.
Yeah. That's a plus.
Yeah, do you want to explain what you guys did, just for those clean audits?
Sure, so we, me and Kelly Cisco, who took over internal, um, bookkeeping, we went and visited the sites that had clean audits and recognized them with a card and a little plaque, and for another principal, um, just to award them for their clean audit, it's a hard job, and that's a huge accomplishment for the bookkeepers. Like Patty said, this was the most we've had, I think, in several years, so we just wanted to make sure that their efforts didn't go unnoticed.
Yeah, they're doing a great job, they got to keep doing it.
Yep.
Excellent, thank you.
Great. Okay, so, um, we will move on now to seven point oh nine, self-insurance actuary statement.
I will just speak to this briefly, if you will, just give a quick summary. Every year, we're, um, are required to file our annual plan financials, which that plan year is not like our fiscal year, it's from September first to August thirty-first. We are required to file our plan financials with our, um, actuary, they file that report with the Office of Insurance for the state, and the Office of Insurance reviews it to make sure that we are fiscally in a decent place and meet the safe harbor rule, um, which we have, and we have every year since becoming self-insured. Um, the only thing to note on here is, the last several months of the plan year, we did have very, very large claims, exceeding over a million dollars for several months. Um, our fund balance for this did go from five point nine million to four point seven million in the self-insurance fund. Um, it seems like a decent, healthy amount, but, um, insurance is is very rocky. So, um, we have our consultants watching this very closely with us, and we continue to monitor claims on a weekly basis, Carrie updates that on a weekly basis as these claims are paid. So, um, bottom line, good report, um, everything is approved, we are in good standing, which is the gist of that report, this on board docs, um, for approval by the board.
Any, um, questions regarding the actuary? Okay, I I just, you said the larger claims that came in, that they came in after this audit was.
No, this is for the September through August, um, period, September twenty-two to August twenty-third, and the last several months of that time period, June, July, August, we had over one million dollar claims in those months.
Okay.
Um, so, at the beginning of the year, midway through the year, it looks like a a very good year, like we were ahead of where we were projected to end up, and we just had, um, some very bad months of claims. And that can vary, I mean, that's, you can't predict that, but we do have stop-loss coverage in place, so we are covered from, is it two hundred twenty thousand, Chris?
Two twenty-five.
Two twenty-five, so anything over two twenty-five, that's our stop-loss, and then, um, we don't pay anything more in excess of that, so this really comes down to timing. Um, I think what our, um, what we're seeing according to our consultants is kind of like the kickback from COVID, and and people are now really starting to continually see go to, um, their primary care, go to the doc, to the, uh, doctors, this past year, we've really seen it quite a bit. The last couple of years, we've had very good years of health insurance, and we do believe that was driven because of COVID, that there are people just weren't, you know, weren't visiting their doctors.
Okay. All right, so we will, uh, then, um, move on, I think that was the last.
Thank you.
Thank you for the information provided. Okay, so now we are going to be moving on to academic services, um, overnight travel consent, field trip, uh, Mr. Reeves.
Good afternoon. Here, Mr. Freeman. Uh, we have six trips on the docket, uh, four for FPC, two for Metansus. The one, two for Metansus are a JROTC competition, and another one is the percussions ensemble opportunity out of state. Just a little background, based on the last conversation, that we have one of the largest in the southeast steel drum bands. And, um, and so it's sometimes it's hard to get good feedback, because there's not a lot in our area, so their their travel often, and so side note, they're going to be performing over in Tampa at the national conference, and so back in January, so that's a great opportunity for them to get, uh, great feedback and to perform and shine for Flagler County. Uh, the four for FPC is future problem solvers, a JROTC competition for them, an SGA, uh, training opportunity or a conference for those students, and, uh, their their all-state choir is going to Tampa to compete at the Flora Music Association, so great, great opportunities for our students and staff.
Good stuff. Good to see the students back.
Absolutely. Any questions?
Any questions from anybody? No?
Okay, thank you so much.
All right, so we will, um, move on to instructional calendar, presented by Ms. Bossardette.
Hi, good afternoon.
Uh-oh, uh-oh, hear that voice.
Yeah. So our calendar committee did meet yesterday, and all ten committee members were there, just as a friendly reminder for anyone who wasn't able to tune in last week, our calendar committee is comprised of two FCA members, two FESPA members, two parents who are chosen by, uh, our FESPA and FCA, and our superintendent, and four district commu, uh, district members that are appointed by the superintendent. In our discussions, we did take the lead from the directive from the board, and we looked at making sure that we ended the first semester by winter break, preserved an entire week for Thanksgiving, ensured that our students would not be on campus on, when our schools were being used for polling, which occurs for the primary election on the twentieth, and the general election on November fifth. Um, and then we prioritize, as Superintendent Morris shared, when the hurricane makeup days would be. Again, those are always subjective to the timing of if we have a hurricane, when the timing is, obviously, if we were to have one like we did in prior years, that a hurricane that occurred a week before one of the slated hurricane makeup days, if it is not enough time for families to make adjustments and for our staff to make those adjustments, we may consider adjusting those prioritized hurricane makeup days. Um, the calendar does have eighty-five days in semester one, and ninety-four days in semester two, but just a friendly reminder, this calendar will only work if we add the seven minutes to the sec, to the high school day. So, if this is approved, that will also have to be approved at the same time, um, because they have to go together.
Maybe two separate agenda items.
How would you like them presented?
It could probably just be one.
Yeah, I think all-encompassing would be the best, yes.
All-encompassing, you've got it. So, do you, uh, one of the things that is, uh, usually a question that we receive, is when is the spring break for our surrounding counties? Volusia County will be having their spring break the last week in March, St. John's will be having spring break the same week as we will, and Daytona State College will actually be on spring break the same week that we will be.
Oh, good.
So, which is a nice thing for our families, we did contact them to ensure that we could maybe line those up. While we do want to make every effort to align with our surround, all of our surrounding counties, it's just near impossible, um, but for those students who are dual-enrolled, having those two align is a real benefit.
Someone should email Romera, I think she's the one who brought that up. Was Romera the one who brought that up, about dual enrollment and still having to go through school when on break?
Yes, we hear from a lot of students, and we always try, and sometimes, um, we have a great relationship with Daytona State College, so I just text the person, and they're very quick to respond and say, hey, this is the date that we've selected, so they're just wonderful to work with, and and that's how we were able to get that information. It wasn't out on the website, so we were able to get that for you. Um, another question that did come up, and it's probably worthwhile sharing for the good of the public, a question did come up about why do we have two weeks of break for, um, over the winter time, because parents are saying, you know, we'd like to see the students maybe go back in that first week after, like, of January, and one of the things that our FESPA representatives did share, they reminded everybody that that is a ti, a great time for plant services and custodial, and everybody else to get some projects done that need to happen in our buildings when students are not there, and some of them are timely and can't be put off until the summertime, when we do have that extended time without students, so this is a a great opportunity for those short-term, but, you know, more than today, projects to occur.
Do you all know when Bike Week is, or factor that in there too?
Um, no, that, we did not, I will be perfectly honest with you.
I only think of it because there's so many people on the road and stuff, and I I always hate that, but I know we can't make everybody happy, so.
Yes, um, I I can tell you that some of the, oh, Biketoberfest typically happens a little bit later in October, um, I think it's.
Spring break.
Yeah, spring break is the one they were asking about, I apologize, I do not know.
No, it's okay.
When Bike, Bike Week is. I, we could, I could put that down for the future. Um, and I will say, I would just like to give a special shout-out to our parents who are on the committee, they always come with, and our, our FCA, president, she always comes, they come with great feedback, they've gotten the feedback from everybody, and our parent members had some great advice for next year, moving forward with the development of our calendar. So we will be utilizing some of the feedback that we receive for them to really get more parent involvement, they had some great ideas about how to get parents more involved, because that's one of the things that we do strive for, so Bike Week will be a topic for a discussion, for sure.
That's actually, that was going to be my one question, because as you were, again, going through who comprises the membership, it just felt like parents, like, we don't, we, it, only having two parents, there's no way we can have representation of elementary, middle, and high, right, because we only have two. So, I mean, that that was kind of the one thing that struck me, is it feels very staff-heavy, which of course, we want staff representation, but it feels almost very staff-heavy, and with only then two parents, so that, so I'm glad you guys are looking at how to get better parent involvement.
Yes, and the great thing about the parents, so the reason why the the committee is made up the way it is, is because that is what's written into contracts, so it wasn't just an arbitrary number that was decided, it's what is written currently into contracts, so we follow the contract language of who will make up the team and how they'll be selected. What our parents do a great job of, though, is they put out polls on social media, they're kind of doing unofficial polling. I know that some of the parents already shared that today, they were going to pull the calendar off of board docs, share it out with people, and kind of discuss some of those elements, because a question did come up, can we have students start, you know, January second or January third to get them back in? So we've outlined some of those, so I shared with our parents in an email, here are some of the reasons why the calendar committee typically makes the decisions the way that they do. Please share that feedback, ask questions, and I've already received a few emails from our parent members, asking, hey, can you address this question that's come up, can you address that? So, we do want to make sure that parents have a voice and and so provide feedback for us.
And for just an employee, I, for for twenty twenty-five, Bike Week starts March seventh, for Daytona. It's different dates throughout the state, but for our immediate area, it's March seventh that week, this year, it's March one.
Is that good?
Um, I mean, we can't change everything, I just think for future, thinking about traffic and the number of people on the road, um, parents going to the beach, bikers, it's just, it's a lot going on, just something to think about.
Could we add a a minimum for this calendar year, make sure that we put out, whether it's Facebook or whatever, just make sure that week that we're putting out maybe an extra notification to parents, that, hey, reminder, this is Bike Week? Just from a safety perspective, but, so cool, but I mean, I I think that's at least something we could do, is, um, inform parents.
I don't know, we've had Bike Week for as long as I can remember, I have it here twenty-some years, and it's never been an issue when it came to the school calendar, so.
Yeah, I don't think we're, I'm just saying, like, uh.
Just to see.
Just a friendly reminder.
A friendly reminder, keep your eyes out, increase traffic this week on our roads.
I, I mean, I think of it, I'm going out with my children, doing things, and there's lots of bikers, and it's just.
I think that's a good call.
I'm just out and about all the time, and I I just don't think it's a big deal, but.
It's a good call, thank you.
It's, we can put a warning out, I don't have a problem with that.
Just all good suggestions, please take note of them, and, um, revisit this next.
Um, but, so Louise, this is going to be on consent, so, uh, the, this will just be part of consent items, and so if anybody wants to make public comment, because this is on the agenda, so if any staff member or parent wants, is, does not approve this, they would have an opportunity to speak before this is voted on as a consent item at our next board meeting, right?
Yeah, as long as it's in the consent.
Yeah, right, so otherwise, they, parents and staff have had the opportunity to reach out to you, and so we will, uh, this will be probably pretty fast, unless we hear from somebody that there is an issue with it.
And and if you hear of any concerns, please know that there is an open line to to us, and happy to bring it back to the committee, so if you hear from some of your constituents that there's a major concern about one of the days that we selected, or if there's a question, we are happy to field those questions and and help educate everybody, I know that we've put out a, when we've received parent impact, input in the past, one of the questions came up, well, why can't we just start on on August fifth? Well, statute, so as much as everybody might like to get that head start, we cannot because of statute. Why can't we do this? And and we want to get to yes as much as we can, but there are just certain things that we can't, uh, work around, so we've done our best to to meet all those pieces here.
And thank you.
A lot of work.
Good job.
Thank you very much, appreciate your presentation. Okay, we're going to move on to operational services, uh, Mr. Bush.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
This is the five-year, uh, work plan that we submit every year, um, and I just want to let everyone know that, um, this is still in draft form, but we wanted to bring it to you all um, early, that way, if you had any questions, it wasn't, didn't give you enough time to be able to ask questions before you vote on this. We will be bringing this to you on the nineteenth for a vote. However, if at any point in time from now to then, if we want, any of you all want to meet one-on-one, whether it's with plant services, with Mr. Freeman, or Patty and the finance, please reach out to us, and we can go over this plan and discussion. Well, Mr. Freeman will be presenting this in the ILA Working Group on January eighteenth. We hope to have this all completed, would say probably within the next three weeks. This was delayed from DOE, it's usually supposed to be completed in October, we received, we, this was open to us probably, I think it was like three weeks ago, I believe. So, um, it's delayed not because of us, so we're doing the best we can in moving as quickly as we can to get this turned over. So, is there any questions?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
And and I will, I'll make an appointment to sit down and and speak to both of you, I'm glad to hear that it's in draft form. One of the things I'd like to ask about is the adults with disabilities facility, and, um, what we're doing with that. And so, I'll I'll make an appointment and sit down and chat with both of you.
Okay, are you referring to building two, um, where?
Where step-up is.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Corey, when's the, um, parking lot for FPC supposed to start?
Um, well, it's, it's starting now in the background, but as far as digging, it'll start March first, is is shovel in the ground, if you will, and that will start on the west side, where the road going back to the bus garage, starting there, working alongside where the auditorium is.
Right.
Um, and then our goal is, the schedule is come June, or if we can get in there a little earlier, then that parking lot will be closed down. And we are working diligently with the auditorium, further programs, because they are not shutting the programs down, they're going to continue to have those, so there will be coordination with them to continue that, but as far as. But as far as the parking lot, it will be closed down to the school. The school is where we've been communicating with them for probably six months now on that happening. Um, and the goal is to have it all completed by school opening in August. Yes.
Yeah, it's so desperately needed.
Oh, yes, we're, we are excited because we're adding a lot of drainage that is, that is not there.
Yeah, it's like, wow, finally.
Yes.
That's good. Also, um, what are you doing to the old school board building? It says renovations. What's happening there?
The old county office?
Yeah.
Um, so, we're, we're going through the, um, last year, we upgraded the air conditioning units and the roof, but we did not do anything on the inside. And part of some of FTC, um, they have several rooms that are very small. So, they're, um, they're only allowed to have so many people sign up. So, we're opening up some of those walls. Um, the front lobby area, we're renovating that to the drop ceiling and doing the model like what the schools are where they have the door. Then there's gonna be another, like, a glass front to where they'll have to buzz somebody pass in through. Correct. So, setting it up similarly as to school and doing some other things. We're not doing any of the flooring on this particular part. We're gonna hopefully do that in next year. We want to get this part done to help them be able to have more students or occupants in their class, um, from Renee and, I'm not sure what programs there are, but I know there's a couple of them that they're not able to have. They have the students signing up. They just don't have the space to allow them. So, we're opening them up for that.
We're, we're meeting with the CFO next Wednesday to, uh, go over the financial part of the work plan. And Ms. Moore has already had a meeting with myself and Mr. Bush and, and some others on the FTC on Step Up, on some options.
Oh, good.
For Step Up. So, we have, we've been working on some other options for that, that we're coming back to discuss this next week.
I'm gonna be gone soon, Dave. I've only been asking for like 20 years, so I'm hoping we can get something done.
Give us a couple weeks.
Um, just another question. I noticed on the work plan, we still have Adult Ed Corp One identified. Is that because we still just own the property? Okay. I wasn't sure.
That's.
Yeah.
Because it's clear.
That's one of the ones that went away.
There's nothing there, right?
There's nothing there. That's right.
But we have to have it on the, the plan. Okay.
Yeah, and, and we're, believe it or not, we are still having to pay for, because of the water and storm. We still pay, um, the counties, the county, no, we have to pay a certain, I, I forget exactly how much it is because it's storm, you know, they're gonna get their money.
Okay.
Even though we don't, I mean, it's our property, so.
Right, right.
There's no buildings on it.
Interesting.
Yes.
We were able to, to update that because it's, it's pervious now.
Right.
Instead of, before it was non-pervious when the building was there.
Gotcha.
So, we did get a little bit of break for Donda.
Okay.
And I will bring back the renovations to the hardening of the youth center. It was on there. It has fallen off. And now that we're doing FTC that has students there, we also have students every day over at the youth center. And it needs to be hardened, renovated, you know, we need this different structure. So, that's something that's gonna have to be added in there eventually, not immediately, but I know it's gotta get back and realistic.
I, I believe it's on the five-year plan, just, let's say it's, when I call the five, there's more over here.
Yeah, I know.
Six on out.
It's gotta get back.
Correct, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions?
No, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
All right, thank you all.
Thanks, Cory.
Okay, so now we will move on to 11.01, request board approval of personal, of personnel items, and that is Mr. O'Leary.
Chairman Ferry, board, Mr. Dave. The consent agenda, um, is a work, living document, so there'll be more added between now and the 19th. Um, it is a short time, so there won't be anticipated a lot, but that is kind of.
But it is.
It is.
I have a question. November, we lost nine teachers. It bears reason. We're moving out, whatever it is. We fired one in this year. Where do we stand? How are we doing staffing?
Uh, we have, we, we have more folks in the pipeline than just one. I can give you the exact number and email it to you. But, um, absolutely.
Yeah, that, I mean, that's a concern. We, I mean, and it may change by the end of December. You know, it may have a lot more, but we've got to have some kind of balance from losing to hiring.
And actually, um, uh, we, we do have balance except in the continuing hard-to-fill areas of math, science, and lately, foreign language. That, that's been a tough one lately. But, um, I'll give you the ins and outs.
Thanks, ma'am.
By my.
That's fine.
I'll send it all to you on email.
That'd be good. Thanks.
That'll be helpful. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, well, thank you, Mr. O'Leary. Okay, so, moving on, um, we don't have any other consent or action items. So, we're gonna move on to 21, old business. Does anybody have any old business?
Yeah, given in light of the conversation today, um, and also what Sally was saying, I'd like to ask that we put policy 511.1 on the agenda for discussion. And it's really more, because we have a very detailed process laid out for how reports for bullying are supposed to be handled and how they're supposed to be funneled to the district office. But looking at it, we really don't have checks and balances in place. So, I don't know if there is something that we can do there to modify the policy, but it might be worthy of a discussion.
Okay. Is there, uh, when would you like to have that on the, do you want it on the next, uh, the information workshop? Do you want to save it for?
If it's not too loaded.
Okay. And we'll leave it for either that one, if it's not too loaded.
That's fine.
Otherwise, we'll bring it in January.
That's fine.
Yeah, I mean, I, my preference would be to prioritize it if possible for December.
Okay, we'll, we'll try and get it in on, on the next information workshop if we can fit it in.
And Dr. Conklin, was this in part in response to Yvette's comment about the say, see something, say something, and then just obviously bullying in general?
Right, because the policy actually does outline, we, we revised it a couple of years ago, and it's fairly detailed on reporting at the school level. And then, that, that exact report is supposed to make its way to the district level. So, there is an ongoing database, if you will. Um, and then the investigation is, there's a whole process that's laid out in the policy. However, the, the conversation is, how are, what are the checks and balances to ensure that the reporting from the school is happening and being reported to the district? Right? So, if, if the school has X number of reports on bullying, then the district report should have the same. So, there, there just may be ways to put in checks and balances into the policy.
Okay.
Dr. Conklin, could I get some clarification? Would you also like to hear from, um, the schools that, um, specifically the administrator that does that reporting?
Well, I, I don't know if this.
On how they handle the pay.
Possibly, but I'm not sure.
I think John Finelli would be able to.
Yeah, John Finelli, I would say, because at the district level, you're wanting.
Yes.
I think we, we just need some checks and balances, because we don't know if that's, if the process is actually being done.
Gotcha. Okay. I just wanted clarification on whether it's a policy revision as opposed to procedures
and maybe notifying the board of what those procedures are and protocols for how it goes from school to the district for mirroring and if that's happening.
Yeah, I think that, so it's, it's detailed. I just checked it again. It's detailed in the policy, but the, the question is, is that happening?
Is it being followed?
Right.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Wherever that lands, if that's December or January, I don't have Yvette's contact information. I know she's paying attention. Um, she's now left, but it, just if anybody has her, once that lands on an agenda, if we as a board, if someone can't reach out to her to make sure she's aware of when we're gonna be discussing it, I think that'd be lovely.
She'll be here. She's gonna be coming.
She's, absolutely. I just, just to make, absolutely to make sure.
Okay. Any other?
Yeah, old business. I would like to hear some kind of update on where we are on our financial checks and balances, so we don't have a situation that recently developed, ever developed again. And since Patty's not here, can you answer that?
You're welcome.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Yeah, please come on up.
Yeah, that, that, we have to make sure that, that we have systems to check and check and double-check, because I'm certain we're gonna still be making electronic payments. And so, we have to make sure that that has been set aside. We do have the checks and balances, so it doesn't happen again. Where are we on that?
Sure. So, we are still, um, in an active investigation. We are still working with Ameris and Chase, um, right now. So, I'm not sure we're having an answer from them regarding anything as of yet. However, since then, we have, um, implemented a new ACH process. You're right, because we still have to offer ACH payments. Believe it or not, that is the, still the safer route to go. Um, tomorrow, actually, we do have a fraud training with the finance staff. Me, Fett, actually asked to join in. Uh, we went through the finance train, or the fraud training, me, Patty, um, the superintendent, all ready. It was super good, super beneficial. Uh, they are coming tomorrow to do that with the finance staff. And then, of course, we're still going through our policies and procedures just on the finance end and just seeing how we can kind of tighten up, button down, and, you know, make the process streamlined a little bit more.
I don't know if there's any way, and this is probably a technology question, that we can double verify ACH account numbers prior to using them.
So, we get a lot of ACH requests.
Yeah, I know.
Okay, so, a lot. Um, the manpower is extreme to call every single one, because we have to hand-touch every single one that comes through. Um, with the new procedures, I'm happy to share that with you guys. It's a policy I wrote. Um, we still have to allow new ACH payments to come through. However, we have a bunch more forms. We have either a bank letter requesting, you know, to say that, hey, this is active checking account or business account. Um, this is the number, you know, they're confirming, or a business check with the letterhead. So, if they don't have the letterhead that matches the account number they are physically writing on the form, then it needs to be a bank letter. Now, we will hand-touch every single ACH that changes. So, if we get a change form from a company, uh, we will have staff reach out to them to confirm the change. It will be, they are gonna be speaking to the person on the W9 that we have in the system. So, we will have that in place for changes ACH.
Do we have in-house, like, not you just by yourself doing this? We have in-house checks, so I want to make sure that, that you and somebody else verifies.
Oh, yeah, it's gonna go, it's going through a whole chain. So, it's gonna start with.
Yeah, that's a.
Now, with the policies, like I said, I'm happy to share them, um, it's gonna hand-touch at least five people in the finance department.
That's what I want to make sure.
So, do we need to update a policy to reflect that? Or is it more procedural?
Procedure, sorry. In our finance procedures.
I thought, I thought it was procedural.
There is a policy. We just incorporated that in our procedure. Yes, in, in-house procedures. Yes, thank you.
Can I follow up, though, on, on both of these? Do, um, because you said there's a lot of ACH. But there's a difference between a 500, and again, I don't know the, no, I don't know your business, right? But there's a difference between, let's say, a, a thousand-dollar bill we have to pay and a $710,000 bill, right? Is there, uh, maybe this is a two-part thing. One, is there a way for us to kind of learn how many transactions are at that 250,000-plus, where maybe, and, and, you know what I mean? Are they, are they all, because this is a district, are they all like pretty high-dollar items, right? So, when you talk about volume and, and people power, it's like what I just, my mind explode with how many large dollar items. But I'm wondering, I realize that this is procedural, but does there need to be a policy that there's a threshold, like a certain dollar amount requires, you know, so for purchases, ACH 250, 250,000 and above, there is this extra layer or whatever. It's, I think all of us, when we learned about it, it was, especially as we've talked about, um, operational efficiency and, um, it, that was a bad day. That was a bad moment, right? And I think as a board, I don't want to speak for my fellow board members, but I think we just, we, um, I don't see this going away, this risk. And so, I want to make sure on behalf of our community who funds the schools that we're doing everything we can do, we can do to safeguard our funds.
We've looked into doing, and Patty and I are still kind of discussing that, we've looked into doing like a threshold dollar amount. Um, the issue is, is that, you know, when you're pulling in one vendor for, per ACH, you're pulling in throughout the whole district. So, it's not just one center. So, a lot of that is over that threshold or over a large dollar threshold. Um, so, we're still trying to work through that process. I think with it hand-touching at least five people in the finance department, um, and then the, we have a final. Chris, our, our person in corner is also looking to make sure that they're, everything's verified in the vendor profile as well. So, she's kind of got the final say, and then we're uploading the final document, um, into our bank. But we have stopped doing it, you know, as soon as they come in. It's now twice a month. So, everything is much more, you know, in procedurally better and, you know, flowing more than what it was before. But we're still looking at the threshold piece.
And board members, if you want to review that policy, it's 708.1.
Yeah, and I'm happy to send that.
708.1, and if you think there are needs to be tweaks or changes, you know, that would be something to bring forward.
I'm happy to set out the procedures as well.
I had mentioned to Patty that, um, one safeguard might be, you know, when, in, in some consumer accounts, when they're setting up ACH or some sort of a direct wire, um, the, the, the other side verifies the account by sending a very small wire. It could be pennies, it could be just a couple of dollars and a random number. And once that's received, you call them and say, okay, we sent you a wire. Can you please tell us the amount we sent you? And that way, it would confirm that that account is that party on the other side. And we have some sort of, you know, verbal confirmation that, that account is, you know, legitimate. And then, um, at that point now going forward, we should be able to trust that, that sending. So, that's just another idea that we might look at putting into procedures.
Do you have a dollar amount? Because that's pretty labor, I think that's what we're talking about. Like, that's pretty labor-intensive, right? And they have lots of transactions. Do you have a dollar amount that you want that process for?
I'll leave that for, a, a dollar amount threshold could be a good way to, to manage that. But when we're talking, you know, um, very large amounts, I mean, if we're, if, if we're talking about, you know, under a thousand dollars, you know, maybe that's, um, too, maybe that's just too.
No, the threshold, I would, I'm thinking 500,000.
Yeah, whatever, well, I, I mean, but if we lost 450,000, I think we'd have a problem.
Yeah, but I think what they're saying is there's a lot of purchases that are lumped together. So, that is collectively, they'd have to do that for almost every game.
Well, whether that can, I, I, that's just a, a thought, right? It's just throwing that out there. Um, from a procedural side, you know, we can have this discussion more. That was just one more thing to throw on there, whatever that threshold would be if we do it at all. So, yeah.
Yeah, look at the policy and if there's tweaks you want to consider it. Look at that.
All right. Any other?
I have a, a quick old business, um, especially with Dave, um, sitting with us today. It, it's my understanding, uh, Belt, Terrace, and Racket Club is coming back, like a presentation, maybe January or February?
In February.
In February?
Yes.
Um, I just wanted to follow up on that. Um, I, I don't remember us as a board necessarily seeing that conversation all the way through. I, I know what the vote was, but my understanding of the vote was that there was going to be, um, like some metrics in place, right? That we would evaluate again after there would be some marketing, some operational changes, um, that we were going to give it maybe another year or whatever and then see, like, uh, it, you know, is it more self-funding than it was before? Um, did, did we as a board come up with what our goals were? How we're gonna evaluate the next go-round of, uh, whether we decide to keep the membership going or not? I don't know if I'm making any sense.
I thought we were gonna review it at the end of the year.
Yeah, I think we did. We did.
I don't know.
We were based on income as opposed to cost.
But I thought we were gonna do it at the end of the year.
Yeah, that's the final one.
Well, my understanding, you were gonna bring it back to, to, to show the, the, the membership participation, is that right?
And that's one thing, and one of the big things that we did is we have some membership software that we purchased, if you remember.
Yes.
We were doing that. And this software has been a game changer to tracking the types of membership insurance, what type of insurance, how many times has this person come? And so, that's what we were gonna bring back.
Okay.
To be able to show you, then also tell you some of the, um, things that we did for advertising and, um, maybe what our path forward is for the spring. Uh, so, we were gonna come at the information board meeting in February.
Okay. I, again, I'm, I guess I'm just curious, um, when it comes back around, is the board prepared?
is the board prepared for, what are we looking for? What are we wanting to see that's different?
Yes, this was more of an information meeting, you know, that we were going to bring to you. And if there's something at that time that you want us to bring it, maybe at the end of the year, you know, we could discuss it at that time.
It's just, it's just objective. Are we making money or losing money? That's all.
Exactly. You're right. That's exactly what we said. You know, where it is and then compare it to where it was.
Is it self-funded or is it continuing to be supplemented by things like extended day? Which, and that was, and I'll get with Patty separately. It, it, again, it's my understanding that the state of Florida through, like, whether it's a financial audit, that we, it was, it basically came out in the financial audit that we should not be funding the Belters Swim Racket Club out of that account. Am I remembering that correctly?
Do you have something to add there, Ms. Orme?
I'll just, very quickly, it wasn't that we shouldn't be funding them, it was that they shouldn't be operating at a loss. So what happened several years ago is that when this hit the papers, the comment that came from the auditors is they should be a self, what do you call it?
Self-funding.
Self-funding, self-sustaining entity on their own, and they were not. So that was the actual comment that came out. It wasn't that we shouldn't be doing anything with them.
Okay, cool. So the state auditors, per statute or per rules, the Belters Swim Racket Club, the membership port, the membership Belters Swim Racket Club, it is not consistent with state statute for public schools to be funding, to be supplementing.
No, it's not. I don't believe in.
No, I'm just, I'm literally.
I don't, I don't believe state statute talks to that. What the auditors were bringing up is that if you're going to have an arm for the community, it should be self-funding and not pulling funds from somewhere else. That really was the whole gist of the comment. I don't know if there's any statute that basically states that because I want to say in that audit comment, there was not a statute that was cited. So if there's no statute cited, this is their interpretation of how they see things for the school district.
So the, the auditors are from where?
They're the state, it's the, it's the State of Florida Auditor General's office. So they have, they're housed in Tallahassee, and they have district locations all throughout the state.
So are there comments just like, hey, like, they're just kind of recommendations that we really don't need to pay attention to?
No, a lot of the comments are with regard to state statute, but not all of them are. A lot of them, or some of them are their interpretation of law or their interpretation of how something should be. So it's, it's, it varies.
Okay.
I mean, some are very straightforward if it's a statute, but there, there's some that, and we will, you know, go back and forth with them. There's some that we're like, no, that's your interpretation, but our interpretation is this. It just really depends on the topic.
Yeah, and I believe we're the only school district in state of Florida that has a swim club associated to its district.
A swimming racket club, I do believe.
Yeah, we're the only one.
Yeah, and, and again, I'm, I'm going to state that what happened that year we got the audit comment is nothing new that has happened before, nothing new that's happened since. The reason it was on their radar is because it made headlines from, I'm sure, a board meeting. So I used to work for the Auditor General's office, so I know how that goes. And they get a feed every morning of all the headlines for school districts or colleges because they audit the colleges as well. So once these hit for some of their school districts that they audit, they take notice of it. That, that literally is why that became an audit comment.
So they took notice and said, like, this doesn't, this doesn't seem right, was basically their interpretation.
But to, to that point, they never repeated the comments, even though the same situation has not changed.
It was because it was in the media.
Correct.
So this will be on the agenda for February, kind of an update. Okay, that's all that I had.
All right, any other old business?
Yes. Well, no, mine's new.
Oh, it's on a new business. Okay, so no other old business. So we're going to move to twenty-one oh two. There's a placeholder here for interim board attorney services. As you're aware, we, we had moved our business meeting to accommodate the Thanksgiving holiday. And so our, the window of time between now and this workshop was just not enough time to bring back anything for you today. So we'll just move past that there and move on to twenty-two point oh one, new business.
Yes, I've been receiving a number of complaints, complaints about liaisons. And that's why I specified at our reorganization meeting to review the duties of liaisons. And the complaints that I've been receiving is the fact that it's been a year. And in some cases, our liaisons have not shown up to their responsibilities at all. And they, they find that, and that's our community, a lot of community people that we need to touch base with. We need to be involved with. We need to know, they need to know that you're there for them. And that's, I find that concerning. So now, I knew we were reorganizing, and we did, and we all have new assignments, which is wonderful. But I'm requesting that everyone here make an effort to, to make the association with those liaisons that you're assigned. And in the event you cannot attend, to feel free to contact any one of us to, yeah, and we'll be more than glad to cover it for you. Because there are times that it's a conflict, you're not well, something comes up and you can't make it. Okay, well, then maybe someone else can, and that way it gets covered. And it's just something, everybody knows what they're doing. Everybody knows, we're not going to explain who it is and what the problem is. It's just something as a group, we need to make an effort to be more vigilant about getting to these meetings because it's important.
Well, just keep in mind, I mean, some of us have full-time jobs. Mine is a twelve-hour day, so.
Well, I'm sorry about that, but that's part of when you take your assignments, it is part of your responsibility as a school board member. And when you ran for school board member and you got elected, it's a part of that responsibility. So I, you know, I'm sorry you work a twelve-hour day and you have, you know, to do that.
Well, I do the best that I can. We all have responsibilities. And I'm always here at these meetings.
Well, I'm glad that you do. That's part of your responsibility. But just make sure you make contact with your liaison, and if you can't, get somebody else to fill in.
So we're going to be having, we're going to, we're going to be scheduling a retreat here to review our procedures manual. And we'll definitely include liaison assignments as part of that conversation. Thank you for bringing that up. And, you know, while we're talking about that, do we want to, to schedule that date right now? I was thinking before the, before the workshop in January, if we could maybe schedule it like at a one o'clock before that. Yeah, our, when is our, our January meeting scheduled? I don't have the schedule.
January ninth, probably.
I would think it's the ninth.
It is the ninth. It is the ninth.
So the ninth, at say.
I kind of want to avoid that just because we just finalized our schedule and I have to put my days in so far in advance at work, so.
So why don't we discuss it then at the next workshop?
Okay, let's discuss it then.
You know, that way, that'll give you time to.
Our information meeting, is it the nineteenth is our next meeting?
The, the next agenda meeting is on the ninth. The information is on the twenty-third.
Twenty-third, yeah.
Okay.
So by the twenty-third, we should have.
By the twenty-third, yeah, okay. Very good.
It works.
Okay.
Are we still on new business?
We still are on new business.
I have something. That's okay.
Yes, absolutely.
Superintendent Moore and I at the FADS and the Super, and the Florida School Board Association's joint conference, the focus was on AI, and it was really super, super interesting. The keynote speaker talked a lot about education and AI in all sorts of facets of the operations of a school district. And one of the things that she recommended, and LaShaka and I were very excited about, was doing a task force on AI. So I would like basically permission from the board, if they're okay with doing the task force on AI with LaShaka, with Superintendent Moore.
Well, I just have a question. What would kind of be the scope of the task force?
So there were different aspects of operations under AI. So there was budget, resources, curriculum, student learning, security, cybersecurity, utilizing it in the classroom, but also operationally. What, how, how are currently, so basically the task force would do a needs assessment, kind of look at where we are currently utilizing AI. Because our departments were probably utilizing AI and don't even realize it. And then what other tools out there that may be accessible that would increase operational efficiency, but also be able to look at AI in the classroom. And so, for example, there's a whole host of jobs that are going to be created because of AI. One of them they talk about is prompt development. So we should be working on those kinds of things in the classroom right now. But if we're not having conversations about them, people may not even be aware. The other piece was really looking at an overall picture of, and I want to give kudos to Christie because they talked about developing a policy around AI, and we were, we were the first district to have a policy around AI. But even with that being said, the policy probably needs to be tweaked because there are many that are kind of looking at AI and what kind of policy can we put in place or best practices can we put in place not to use AI? For students not to use ChatGTP and whatnot. The reality of the situation is, it is just going to grow. So it's having a conversation about how are those things integrated into our school district from an operational perspective, but also an academic perspective. So LaShaka and I were just very excited about the keynote speaker. And she basically has a roadmap for what you would be looking at. And I know we've got a, I think, a, like a Google chat set up with her to get a little bit more information. But I wanted to bring that forward. Many times, board members can develop a committee, but I wanted to bring that forward and see if there was consensus. I'd like to lead that task force with Superintendent Moore.
Okay. There's no doubt AI is moving at a very fast pace. I would imagine our students know more about AI than, than we do. So we're, we're catching up with this here. You know, I'd be in favor of, of, of a fact-finding mission of, of how.
That would be part of the task force, yeah.
And, so what, at the end of the, at the end of the day, what would the task force deliver? There's a lot of topics there.
So I think we would deliver kind of where we're utilizing it right now, what opportunities there are for us to utilize it where we're not utilizing it in those various categories, right? I've taken, you know, I'm taking a second class through MIT on utilizing artificial intelligence for business efficiencies. So even in that perspective, I'm learning a lot. But really, it was, it was a very interesting conversation. And like I said, Superintendent Moore and I got very excited about just taking a deep dive into it.
So would you be essentially forming a committee or something like that? Okay. I mean, from, from what you're sharing, I, I don't, I could give consensus to that. Was anybody else having any thoughts about that?
No, I think it's a great idea, and it, it is an issue that's rapidly progressing. So, yeah, I agree.
I, my only follow-up question, I mean, I think it's great, and I'd appreciate your time spent on it. I would just ask if there's going to be a committee, a focus group, or, you know, whatever, just to ask if someone is interested in participating, who's listening?
Oh, yes.
Like, who that, you know, who that would be and where the, so I don't know if you can follow up, like, at the next meeting of how someone could get, join you and that.
We'll probably put an invite out. I was thinking about that today, actually, funny you brought it up. We'll probably put an invite out, but we want people from different departments, too. Like, we want somebody from custodial, right? Because the ordering of materials could be really, you could utilize AI to do that in a more efficient manner. So every department, you know, I'd hope we could have somebody that would be representative.
Yeah, I'd say let's get it started and see where this goes.
Excellent. And I'll report back as we go. Thank you.
Excellent. Okay, new business?
Yeah, I have a couple of things.
Okay.
The, the first one is something that I have thought about for a very, very long time. And I just wanted to, again, take it to my fellow board members. Something that has come up enough is pride flag or different symbols. And something I thought about a while ago was Katie Leinhardt and her contest for the voter information cover, artwork for the voter information cover. And what I was wondering is if anybody has any ideas around the school board sponsoring some type of contest for a visual that represents all of our students being included, you know, we feel all of our students, whether they are gay, straight, Muslim, Jewish, black, white, all are loved, all are, we believe all are rock stars. Like, is there something, again, that's within, within state statute that Flagler Schools could do where we have our image that reflects whether it's this is a safe space or this is, everybody is welcome here in Flagler Schools? Where we're not getting into one subset of students? That, personally, that's, that's my stance. I love all of our students. I want all of our students to be successful coming out of Flagler Schools. Anyway, I just, I want to throw that out to the group. If anybody has any thoughts around that, very rough idea.
We'd have, this would either have to come back as some sort of a policy or, you know, I think that, I'm not really sure exactly what the ultimate goal of what your comment is to achieve, right?
So imagine, so if I can clarify, yeah, clearly clarify real quick. If it is an art piece, an image, a graphic, that one of our students has designed, that we voted on and approved, and that is something that we could create stickers or posters, or so if a teacher would want to put on their door or their wall, like, this is, right? Like, all of my students are loved, accepted, I want you to be successful. It would be imagery.
Are you saying kind of like, you know how the district attorney does the drug-free poster contest? No?
No, maybe not.
So, so the district attorney every year does a statewide poster contest, all grade levels. And he gives out, you know, actually, I think he gives out money. He gives out money?
If we give awards, money, but it's a property.
I'm not saying we give out money, I'm just saying. So, and, and basically, the students create a message, and it's a piece of art.
Yeah.
But that's a drug-free message.
Right.
Are you saying something like that, that we would put out a contest of some sort where the visual would be a representation of the entire district and the student body?
Either the, but you just gave me a thought, either the entire district or do we have student artists, or again, it could be computer artists at the elementary level, middle level, high school level, or per school, right, it could be per school, that, that, that image in either, either for that school year or for however long, represents this kind of message of inclusion.
So what he does is the winner gets on the, right, the winner, he creates posters for the entire region. So the winner of, we've had a couple of Flagler students that have been the winners, and he prints the posters and he distributes them across his entire district region. So is that what you're kind of, is that what you mean?
Yeah, I mean, I think that's the vision is, I think there's a lot of, I think it's lovely for a teacher who wants to say to her or his students, you know, I think you're awesome, right? In a visual, I, for those who are in the room, and I, I think this is okay for me to say, Superintendent Moore drafted, I thought, a really lovely letter in response to a lot of the discussion around whether it's a pride flag or whatever. And, and she talks about that our classrooms have, I, I use this term all the time, and now I'm blanking on it, precious real estate, what's my valuable real estate, right? And that the classroom walls should be filled with visuals that reinforce the statutes and learning. And that the classroom walls should be filled with visuals that reinforce the statutes and learning. But that teachers are expected to build relationships with students so that students feel, that students are comfortable to learn in that space. And so, like, can we help our teachers by us creating a visual? That we don't get in the mess of statutes or, Mike Cochiola brought up today, culture wars or whatever. It was just a thought of, because I love the idea of teachers saying, you are, I think you're amazing, you're welcome here, let's learn and grow together, without it being a deal.
Well, I would add that this would likely be a great conversation to have with Superintendent Moore. As long as it fits within our policy, then all these are great ideas, right? So, I think that that's exactly how Ms. Moore responded to those inquiries that you mentioned earlier. And she responded in reference to our policy and state statute. So, you know, anything that fits within our school policy and state statute.
I love that. She would be the person, she'd be the person to approve that. I mean, it's very, it's her buildings, right? It's her teachers and classrooms. I just, I kind of wanted to see if the board would be okay with.
Well, it would really be upon the superintendent's decision on that. As long as, again, we have our policies and we have statute that has to be followed. And as long as it falls within that, that's within the purview of the superintendent to begin with.
Well, you're honest, I'm sorry.
The only thing I was going to say is that we do have capturing kids' hearts in all of our schools. And that pretty much is what you're talking about. You're getting more specific, but the whole idea is to make it welcoming to all students. Doesn't matter where you're from, what color your hair color, or any, doesn't matter. We welcome all students. And that's where our training has come in for all the people that participate in capturing kids' hearts. Could you take it to another level? Absolutely.
It's really meant to be, that's, it's really just meant to be, again, whether it's by campus or by district or whatever. It's meant to be a symbol, like a visual, that we could maybe all just get behind.
I think it's within state statute, something that thinks of everyone and, you know, that we all know and makes it, it's good and super, the superintendent's important.
And here's the thing, too, to remember. And we can talk more about this at the retreat that we have when we go over the policy, our own procedures, right? As board members, just like I pitched the idea of the task force on AI, you could pitch the idea of taking, like, take a lead on that, right? If you wanted to do a contest or you wanted to do a super, whichever way you wanted to do it. But as board members, I mean, that's one of the nice things, right? If there's something specific that you're very, very interested in, you can create a committee to look at that or take a deeper dive into that. And so, when we get together for our board retreat, I would, we can take a deeper dive into that part of the procedure manual.
Okay, well, I will get with Grandma and get her thoughts. And then, I just have one other thing. So, Dr. Conklin, I think in that same vein, I'm very mindful of two things. One, Flagler Forward, which I love. And two, that we're about to enter 2024. And I think that there's something really beautiful about the new start of a new year. Dr. Conklin, I don't know if this is something that has been done before. But would it be possible for us to host as the Flagler County School Board? Like a summit or a retreat or a special meeting with our land developer partners? Something that has come before is the different parcels of land that we own. We constantly are hearing about these new developments coming in. For me personally, like, I would love to have a better relationship with our community partners in this, in the sense of land development, housing development. And I just, I didn't know if that's something that we could do. I don't, I can't tell you right now what the agenda would be exactly. But I think it would be nice, I think there's also been a little bit between the, not the ILA, the-
Oversight Committee?
But the, how much money we get.
Impact fees.
Impact fees, right? There's just been some stuff with, like, impact fees and it was-
Oh, well, they hate them.
Well, but, so, there, so there have been some really kind of, I think, tough conversations and stressful conversations. And I just, again, 2024, new year, Flagler County, particularly Palm Coast is expanding. That is, I think that those are relationships that I think would be really healthy for us to-
Have a seat at the table?
Well, in order to have a seat at the table, but in order to be good partners together, there's maybe some, I don't want to say repair work, but maybe it would be nice for us to host some kind of meeting, to start 2024 off on the right foot.
I don't, I would, I'd want to know more. Like, what is the goal of the, what is the agenda? What's the outcome of the meeting? But I think it's critical to understand that, of course, it's a contentious relationship to a degree. Because they don't want to pay impact fees. They don't want to pay the reservation fees. They don't want to pay any of that. So, they're angry that we're insisting that they're paying that. Because it is our purview as board to look out for the district's benefit, not their benefit.
And I think that that's, and I have been involved far less than you. I just, I have a different perspective. Because I think while our motivation might be different, they, you know, it's like they care about profits, right? And we care about student success, right? I think we all want the same, I can't imagine we don't all want the same thing. And let me explain. A schools are great for-
Hundred percent.
Right? A schools are great for business.
Yeah.
Right? What, we just had Advent Health here, right? A schools are great for hiring nurses and doctors. I think we live in a community where everybody wants A schools.
Hundred percent.
They want schools in the right places. They want the buses to run, correct?
Sure.
So, I hear you. And I, but I think part of what you just said is what I would love, that's the reason maybe for this, is where do we all, where do we have consensus on what we want? Where are they, where are they going with their plans? Where should schools be?
Right. I have no problem having a conversation or a meeting like that. But I can tell you that the intention and the purpose of their reason for having that conversation would be to reduce those fees. So, I don't know what the outcome of the agenda would be. I'm, I'd be more than happy to sit down. But I can tell you, I would be shocked that that wouldn't be the purpose of their participation.
I think there's a lovely conversation to be had.
Sure.
Well, we're going to have, at some point, there's going to be a revisit conversation to that ILA at some point, right?
We're doing that right now.
Right, we have a working group meeting in January. And then, the oversight meeting follows that in February.
Right, so, I mean, essentially, I mean, just to speak to some of the things you mentioned, we do have a seat at the table, a hundred percent, right? So, that conference is being had. And so, therefore, I think there is that collaboration. But what I would say is that, you know, it can be a challenge when we all, if we're all meet, if we have to all meet as a collective body when it comes to noticing and them knowing, because they're, you know, they also, many of them have to, may have to notice their meeting as well. But that's fine if that comes to that. But the, but we individually can reach out to these people as board members and have a conversation with them and understand where they're coming from, if they have something to share. And vice versa, we can share where we're coming from. We can do that individually and then bring that back here and collectively talk about it. Rather than necessarily setting up a giant, you know, interlocal meeting outside of what we already have scheduled, right? So, and that can be done at any time, right? You just let me know if we, if those that want to do that, you have your, their lines are open and I'm sure they would like to do that.
And I have, and I have had really great conversations with that side, right? If we want to talk about sides. So, may I just ask, because to your point, Chairman Furry, that obviously, there would need to be a willingness to, because they would all be under sunshine, right? There would need to be a willingness to participate. I mean, may I even see if there is a desire to have this kind of a meeting? I hear what you're saying. I have certainly done the one-on-one meetings.
Right.
It is my opinion, based on conversations that I've had, that this would be a beneficial conversation. So, I mean, is it possible for me just to even ask if there would be a desire to have that kind of a, and not even, I hate to call it a meeting, but just a conversation?
I mean, I'm open to it, just for the fact of how we design the future of Palm Coast. It's along the lines I'm thinking of. You think of towns like Nocaté where you can walk to your schools and all. And I, I think that there's a conversation.
Is that a conversation with the government, city government, like Palm Coast and the county?
I'd just say there's two things, like, one is, yours is more of like a visionary meeting? And I think that, I think that is great, too. To kind of say, hey, this is kind of a vision. We'd like to see schools walkable to our, to neighborhoods, right? Like, I think that's one thing and that's a collaborative conversation. If it's coming to impact fees and interlocal agreements, all I'm saying is we have meetings already scheduled on that topic. So, I mean, so, I think what might be helpful is that for those that have opinions of, of the agreement as it is now and what it might look like in the future, should bring those forward so that those concerns can be brought forward at the meetings that we already have scheduled. Does that make sense?
Yeah, and I think, like, I think ultimately, it's really about fundamental relationship at this point, right? I mean, I'm not, yes, we already have the ILA, we have a seat at table. I've been at that table. I just think, particularly around impact fees, these are, these are people we should not be at odds with. We are all this kind of one small community. And so, even like literally, if it was a mixer, you know what I mean? Like, with Kool-Aid, you know? Like, I think, I think my, if I were to look at my ultimate objective, it would be fundamentally relationship. And then, where it goes from there, I would be open to whatever. But I think, I think there is a relationship opportunity at this point.
I mean, it just, it just becomes, from what you're proposing, it just seems like it becomes a challenge when we are, when we're meeting as a board in an environment like this? Because we all have sunshine and if we're all going to be together potentially, we've got to notice this mixer, you know? And there's other elected officials that might have the same concerns on the other side. I think the idea is, in a normal environment, sounds great. I just think there's some logistical constraints for us as a board to do something like that. I'd like to satisfy you and what you're, where you'd like to go. I just, in the way you've described it, I just don't know how practical it is for us to do it, right?
No, it would need to be done in the way it would need to be done.
Right.
I just, that is just something that, under new business, it just, thoughts that I have had, there's, there have just also been things that have come out of those conversations. Again, just know that there are, there are things that have come out of those conversations that have led me to have this question.
Well, if it was more like, if it was like, if it was like some sort of a retreat or some sort of thing like that, I mean, I don't really know. It's quite, there's, because a lot of stakeholders involved in this, in this whole conversation. So, orchestrating it, again, I just don't know. What I would say is that this, sitting here today, hearing it under new business, I don't know that I have any clear direction on where we would take this at the moment, right? It's, I think it's a great, it has merit, the idea. I normally would think that usually stakeholders would usually reach out and say, hey, you know, they would come this way and say, hey, listen, we need to have, we need to have a conversation because we're having an impasse or something like that. You know what I mean? But I haven't had that directly to me. But at the same time, you know, I'm just the new board chair. Maybe somebody might reach out to me about that issue and express the desire to do that. But I think it has, it'd have to be a more formal setting than, than just a, you know.
Right, right. I'm not, right, I'm not suggesting like an informal mixer. I just, anyway. But listen, this was great feedback. I mean, this was really, if the feedback was no, like, we don't want to, you know? But anyway, that was the feedback that I needed.
There's a spot on the oversight agenda that if any of the municipalities or school boards, if they have topics of discussion, that we could bring it up at that time. And then, I mean, we do, the oversight committee meets twice a year, so.
And when is the next meeting of that, do you have that date?
That'll be in February, will be the oversight. The working group, all the planners are getting together in January.
Okay.
Chairman Furry, if I could follow up kind of on what Christie was talking about? Because in the height of development, right, I think '07, '08, right? That was when the real development was happening.
Height was actually prior.
Yeah, that was the crash, sorry.
Crash was '07.
So, prior to that, when we were growing like mad, we actually met as an intergovernmental group, all the city municipalities, the county commissioners, everybody. We met over the EOC giant meeting. And we talked about moving forward, how can we work together to maximize the resources that the tax dollars were paying for? And that's kind of how we got to the teen center, Carver, but also the sharing of parks, co-locating the parks next to all of our schools. We had conversations about sharing and having open library access for those community members. There were some things that worked, some things that didn't. But it was a great conversation. And we just may be at that point where we need to revisit that and have everybody at the table to have a visioning conversation about what does this look like moving forward.
That's what I think.
I love that idea.
I think a vision meeting is something that I think we'd probably get more buy-in also collectively with the other leaders involved in this here. So, we can, I'd say, let's continue that conversation. I think that's something we might start to strive for. I think that's another thing that may be a good retreat item to chat about, to what that might look like collectively as board and how we might engage with other leaders in the community. But I think we're getting somewhere with what you brought forward, Sally.
No, but I mean, but all, but I mean, all of that is the thought is, and for anybody who was at or watched the ILA meeting, I mean, that was something that I'm really passionate about. You know, so, speaking of Nocaté, that's where my parents live. And it's this great, I don't know if you knew that, but that is this, you know, just really great community. And so, that's something that I've brought up, is what is the vision for this area? There's, there's a lot of homes being built, but what is the, what does this community look like in five years?
We'll put that on as just another topic for-
That would be awesome. Thank you.
All right, and any other new business? Okay, so, no new business. We now move on to 23 public comment. Do we have any public comment scheduled?
Can I, should I come up?
Yes, you can.
If you just state your name.
Yes, the record is.
Thank you.
Jackie Rector, Flagler Beach, Florida.
Welcome.
Hello, how are you? So, Chairman Furry and board members, I just want to make just a couple of quick comments. First, you're probably excited by getting out early, so I won't take too long. So, as a resident of Flagler County, I don't have any children in the school system. But I am a concerned resident, citizen. I attended, I attended public school many years ago. And I just recognize, as I sit here and listen, the things that I got from my public school education. And that was my relationship with my teacher. So, I want to applaud you all for all the time that you, you know, you spend to be on the board. A lot of things that have to be discussed, budgets and vendors and those types of things. But a couple of things that I heard that really, I thought were just really great in terms of focusing on our students? Because that's really, that's really where we want to go, is make sure that as we move forward, especially with the new year, board member, let's look at what we got going for the new year. And always keep in mind that what we do here is for our students because they are, they are our future, they are the future of our community. And so, a couple of things you mentioned that were really good. Dr. Conklin, the whole conversation about artificial intelligence, that is huge. We make, we need to make sure that our children are prepared for that. So when they go out into the world, or even now, that that's, it's here to stay. It's only going to get worse or better, however you want to look at it. The whole, the imagery part, I loved that because that is going to bring about, you know, everybody's going to be identified. I just thought that was really phenomenal. And that is going to help everybody, all the students, no matter where you come from, what background. I was raised in a very diverse community, school, public education. And I remember my fifth grade teacher and the relationship that she had with me, but also with my mother, that was, he was, and to this day, she has impacted my life, you know? I had a great education. I've been to college, so she was all a part of that. So I like the whole imagery. That's going to bring everybody together in the school. They're going to feel inclusion and, you know, anything that maybe be hindering the relationship with all the students and their teacher, I think that's a starting point. And then the community partners, because I come from the corporate world. I'm retiring at the end of the year, so you're going to start seeing more of me because I want to know what's, you know, where we're headed with our students. And the community partner conversation, I know that might be a little, it's a little touchy. You might want to open that door because, oh gosh, did we open that? But that's okay because that way you can talk. And talking, communication is always good. Communication is always good. So thank you for your time and appreciate all of what you do. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Do we have any other comments, public comments?
Nothing is signed up.
Okay, then I see no one approaching. So we will move on to 24, closing comments. Start with you.
Uh, maybe.
Nothing?
Pass. Nothing.
All right. Well, I just want to thank our entire team here for all your efforts today. It's always helpful to have your informative information. It helps us get to our decisions. And just thank the board for great conversation today. And I'll just leave it there and I'm sorry.
I would just like to congratulate Ms. Moore.
Yes, oh, yes. Thanks for reminding me about that.
Grandma.
Her new granddaughter.
Grandma Moore.
Grandma. Thank you for bringing that up, Mr. Freeman. All right, so we'll, we'll close it with a congratulations to Superintendent Moore, and we'll adjourn this meeting.
And the next meeting?
The next meeting.
December 19th.
19th, December 19th.
19th.
Okay. Adjourned.